All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. And first up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, if you wouldn't mind all standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone in attendance today. Can I get an adoption of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next up, we have item 2.01, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Buck is not here today as he's recovering from surgery. So I would like to invite Dr. Shelton to present the Superintendent's Report for tonight.
Thank you, our President Foley and Dr. Buck, that's Mr. Perez. There's a lot of great news and a lot of great things going on in our school district. We have a handful of items we'd like to highlight. We've got some good news, Lee Sommet West Senior Ethan Wood earned a Congressional Award Medal from U.S. Representative Emanuel Cleaver II. Ethan was honored for his dedication for community service including more than 400 volunteer hours over the last three years. Additionally, congratulations to...
Thank you. Congratulations to Jennifer Jones, an ELA teacher at Lee Sommet West High School. She was, she has been selected as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as one of the 16 semifinalists for the 2025 Missouri Teacher of the Year Award. Kendall Phone, an incoming sophomore and Chinese III student at Lee Sommet West High School, recently returned from a transformative cultural exchange trip to China with the Youth Leadership in China Program this past summer. Kendall's selection for the program was based on her academic excellence, leadership skills, and demonstrated commitment to cross-cultural understanding. We celebrated Tara Hogan, Focus Facilitator Interventionist at Summit Point Elementary as our August Learning for Life Award winner. Ms. Hogan was nominated by her colleagues for her outstanding qualities. Students recognize that she is on their team and regularly work with her to meet, with her to meet their goals. Mrs. Hogan has a wealth of knowledge and experience with mental and behavioral health. She is a key part of re-engaging students in their learning environment and she collaborates with children, staff, and admin to make Summit Point Elementary the best place to learn and grow. And this week was the first week of school. And I want to thank each and every one of our staff for the smiles, the care, the rigor, and the community they are creating for the over 17,000 students. Please join me in expressing gratitude for our RSL7 staff. And let me go back, since Mike wasn't on earlier, because I want to make sure the public hears this. Lee Sommet West Senior Ethan Wood earned a Congressional Award Medal from U.S. Representative Emanuel Cleaver II. Ethan was honored for his dedication for community service including more than 400 volunteer hours over the last three years. Our President Foley, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shelton. Next up, we have item 3.01, the Lee Sommet Education Foundation Presentation.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me some time tonight to share the wonderful things that the Educational Foundation is doing to support staffs and students in our district. I'd first like to begin with a brief statement regarding something associated with one of our recent events that has been the subject of community conversation. Our organization is proud of a mission that directly supports students and staff in our schools. Our goal is always to contribute to that mission in a positive and uplifting way. While I cannot speak to every aspect of this situation, on behalf of myself and my team, I believe it's important to take responsibility for the areas within our influence. We acknowledge that table decorations were displayed by attendees at our trivia event have caused hurt, frustration, and did not reflect the atmosphere of respect that we strive to create at our events. For this, we are truly sorry. We appreciated the support we received by those that attended this new event and we want our community to know that we are committed to improving our processes to ensure that all aspects of our event promote inclusion, respect, and belonging. We're working hard to make a positive impact and invest back into our district. I'd like to now go ahead and share with you the highlights from last year and what we have in store for 2425 school year. My name is Chrissy Sims. By the way, I'm the Director for the Lee Sommet Educational Foundation. We are a staff of three people, myself, Cindy Swaddick, who's our Program Development Specialist, and Krista Fish, who is our Administrative Assistant. We are led by our Board of Directors, who you can see on your screen this evening, one of which is Regina Garrett, who is our Appointed Board of Education Liaison. And this is just a snapshot of some of the impact that we made over the past school year 2324, some of the investments that we made. Obviously, we're known probably primarily for scholarships and grants, so you'll see those on here. We also invested in environmental science investigative projects and supplies for elementary students to do at Paradise Park, geometry and construction supplies, and the build zone projects for the birdhouses that the fifth graders did. This is to reflect our income from last year. As you can see, a great deal of this centers around our sponsorship campaign and our fundraising events, which allow us to make an investment back into the district, which last year was a little shy of half a million dollars. And you can see the majority or the highest amount of that was for scholarships, which has increased recently. We've opened several new scholarships this past year and look forward to offering those every year. This school year, these are our funding priorities. We've got one more year of a four-year commitment for technology enhancements. This will help pilot a new program for Miller Park. It'll be an audio enhancement and security system, the lanyards that teachers and staff can wear at Miller Park. Classroom grants, real-world learning opportunities through a new program that Emily Wagner and her team are working on. They're going to create hands-on history trunks, allowing students to have tangible items that they can see, touch, and feel while they're learning about history, along with some steam technology. New teacher grants were awarded, it was actually, I think, closer to $14,000 this year. We awarded those during New Teacher Academy. And student-led grants, which will be awarded in the fall, and then again, the birdhouse projects. We also have some donor funds that are established for certain things like tutoring at the schools and helping hands for emergency need-based assistance. So funds like that will also be provided as needed. All of this is made possible through our events and fundraisers, so I will just quickly go through these so you guys can get an idea for what we have in store. We're starting a new raffle this year. Unfortunately, members of the Board of Education, Educational Foundation staff, administrators will not be eligible to participate, but everyone else in the community will be, will be selling online tickets, $100 a ticket, up to 300, and they, the winner will have the choice of one of maybe five different vacation or experience packages. So we're excited about that. Race for the Future, October 12th at Lee Sommet West. This has been going on for nearly 30 years, and so we're looking forward to that event. We have our Community Breakfast, this will be our third year for the Community Breakfast. We invite, of course, members of the community. Oftentimes, we have administrators, Board of Education attend. This will be at Lee Sommet High School on a non-attendance day during the fall break, parent-teacher conference timeframe. Major Saver will be held in November, so we hope you will all consider purchasing those cards. And then Taste of Lee Summit will be March 1st at the Pavilion at John Knox Village. Of course, games, auction items, great food, it's a wonderful event. We're always looking for people to engage with the foundation. We have multiple ways they can do that. Obviously, we willingly accept donations and sponsorships, but we also have committees, events, and plenty of opportunities to volunteer. So we're always looking to grow, and that's something we're working on throughout the course of the year. That's a really quick run-through of kind of highlights for the year, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, next up on the agenda, we have 4.01, Public Comments. Now, before the parliamentarian begins, frequent followers of our meetings may have noticed that we have moved Public Comment to an earlier position in the agenda than it has been for the past year. Missouri Statute 162.058 went into effect on July 1st, 2023, which provided the requirement for boards to have a policy that allows members of the public to add items to our board meeting agenda. In preparation for this new policy revision BDDB, we had feedback from both committees and the board on how this may impact the flow of the meeting and to decide how to prepare. We reduced the number of public comment spots to seven in order to accommodate the three public agenda items for each meeting and moved it towards the end of the agenda. Since this change went into effect one year ago, we have received feedback from many members of the community that believed these moves were taken in order to reduce transparency by hiding speakers at the end of the meeting after any item for vote had already been decided on. Given the feedback that we received, along with the fact that up until now, we had zero, until today, public agenda items added to our meetings, the board leadership team decided to move Public Comment back towards the beginning of the agenda. Please note that this may change at any time as we evaluate the amounts of public agenda items or additional feedback we receive. Thank you.
We appreciate your attendance and your willingness to speak to the board. Please remember that the board does not respond to public comments during the meeting, but may ask clarifying questions. Your comments will be noted by the board and administration, and if appropriate, we will discuss further action with the superintendent. Only those who have signed up prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. Pursuant to Board Policy BDDH, we will be limiting all comments to no more than seven speakers with a limit of three minutes each. You may not transfer any of your time to other speakers. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen. Please conclude your comments when the timer expires. Your comments must align with the subject described in your written request to speak and must directly relate to the business or operations of the district. Your comments may not discuss individual employees or students in the district, regardless of whether your comments speak of them in a positive or negative light. Any such comments should be directed to the superintendent, who will then determine if further action is needed. Because the board does not and cannot impose age-based restrictions on who attends or views board meetings, and because children of all ages frequently do attend board meetings, comments may not include obscenities or sexually explicit content. Furthermore, comments may not include threats of physical or emotional harm or threaten in any way the safety of others. We also remind all those in the audience that the Board Policy BDDH prohibits the use of signs or audible responses. This includes applause, cheers, or jeers. If you are in the audience and wish to respond in some way to a public comment, you may contact the board or superintendent after the meeting. When your name is called, go to the podium and clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any. Emily James.
Good evening. My name is Emily James, and I would like to thank you, Chrissy, for your statements that you made regarding the community. I'll go ahead and get started. To whom much is given, much is expected. When you are elected into a role that represents your community, no matter where you are or what you're doing, you are a representative of your role and your community. It is inappropriate for a stu-, excuse me, for a school board member to say redneck lives matter, because that phrase not only diminishes the significance of the Black Lives Matter movement, but also misunderstands its context and its purpose. The phrase "black lives matter" is not meant to imply that other lives do not matter, but rather to highlight that historically and presently, black lives have been undervalued and marginalized in many societies. The movement and the phrase seek to address these disparities and advocates for justice and equality for black people. A school board member holds the position of leadership and influence within the community. Your words carry weight and have the potential to shape the educational environment and values imparted on students. By using a phrase like "redneck lives matter", you sent the message that downplays legitimate concerns of racial injustice and equality, and instead, you contributed to the culture of misunderstanding and intolerance. Five years ago, we had to explain to LSR7 why children singing "The Joys of Picking Cotton" is offensive. Fast forward to today, and we're having to explain yet again why we will not tolerate any form of mockery towards black people. Hear me clearly when I say, we are not going backwards. This is why we need diversity, equity, and inclusion training and application. DEI equips you to place common sense over nonsense. It is time to stop hiding behind the veil of ignorance and know that for every action, there is a reaction. If you are tired of having these conversations, stop provoking us. In your role, you are granted the opportunity to see firsthand what is going on within our schools. Do your complete job by having conversations with students of color. Come to a black student union meeting to gain a better understanding, and I dare you to ask our students how your redneck lives, excuse me, how your redneck lives matter sign makes them feel. You might take pride in being called a redneck who is defined as an uneducated person who has unsophisticated manners. However, you did not run your campaign off of being uneducated, so we will not allow you to hide behind the veil of ignorance. A fool despises wisdom and instruction and displays his foolishness. Proverbs 1:5 states, "Let the wise listen and add to their learning, and let the discerning obtain guidance." In closing, the role of the school board is to ensure that the educational environment is one where all students feel valued, respected, and supported. This requires a deep commitment of equity and a clear understanding of diverse backgrounds and experiences of the students and families they serve. Shift your focus towards fostering an inclusive and equitable educational environment that uplifts and supports all students, and note, you will never influence the world by trying to be like it. Thank you.
Beth Corey.
Thank you, Emily. My name is Beth Corey. I'm a district alum and parent to two students. It's the beginning of a new school year, and I'm here to express gratitude. Support staff, paras, bus drivers, before-and-after-school staff, parents and teachers staff, specialists, nurses, the men and women who keep our buildings clean and up and running, and those who feed our children, thank you. Thank you to the teachers, the new teachers, the librarians, teachers coming out of retirement, administrators, coaches, counselors, for everyone who takes on far more than their job description dictates. And thank you to all of our LSR7 students, caregivers, and parents. I see a lot of you up here and in this room. Thank you for choosing LSR7. Thank you to the volunteers, the PTA, the caregivers for getting their children to school, to practices, to clubs, for encouraging and advocating for them, for reading all the emails, and for showing up when you can. Thank you to Dr. Buck and to you, the board. Thank you for your time, for the administrative decisions that hire great staff and teachers, that trust our librarians and specialists, that keep kids fed and safe, and that create programs like pre-K. Our children and students look up to us. What we do and how we interact are all teaching moments. I heard this poem, new poem recently, here's a piece of it. "We are one family regardless of religion, class, or color. For what defines a patriot is not just our love of liberty, but our love for one another. This is loud in our country's call, because while we all love freedom, it is love that frees us all. Empathy emancipates, making us greater than hate or vanity." I'll just end with a blessing for this year. Some of these words are authored by others. "God by any name, you truly do want us to love one another and empathize for those different than us. We bless everyone involved in LSR7 this year. You see, the adults, all those who are givers, guide us in how to support them. We want children to achieve, but we know they will also struggle. From the strangeness of growing up in this time with worries that they can't even articulate, thank you who can take our kids and hold them, bless them. Give them a school experience that works, that feeds their growing minds and sustains their wonderful, impressionable, full-of-potential spirits. In the meantime, help us keep learning how to creatively support them, their schools, and their teachers." Amen. Thank you.
Adriana Paez.
Good evening. I'm a mother of two LSR7 students, and I want to start with a question that I was going to ask the last time, which is, how is the district living up to the civic mission of public schools? How will you educate, prepare, and support our youngest citizens so that they not only are thriving socially and academically, but they also become the kind of knowledgeable and active participants our democracy so desperately needs? In the past, parents and community members have had to initiate voter registration efforts and have only recently been allowed to do the bare minimum of visiting our high schools over a single lunch period to register and inform students about the upcoming election. As someone who has registered students myself during that lunch hour, I urge the district to do better. So many of the students I spoke to were very enthusiastic about registering, but had no idea that the next election was a school board election, and by their reactions, likely didn't know what a school board does or that it even exists. So if hypothetically, students did know this school board existed, and they also knew that a school board is meant to serve them, I wonder what they would think of some of our district's shenanigans, the current one being Mr. Haley's gross display at a recently Summit Educational Foundation event, where he declared he was representing all students when he decorated a table with a redneck lives matter flag, shotgun shells, and a warning sign about armed citizens. Now, having worked with young people over my entire career and being a parent, I know there would likely be some students of similar maturity levels who would just laugh as if it were a funny joke. There might also be some who would just be confused not being aware of any victims of redneck discrimination. But I'm most concerned about those students who understand very clearly the message being sent and the intentional decision Mr. Haley made to purchase and display those items. I would go further to ask, what would happen if a student decided to mimic Mr. Haley's behavior with such a display in our schools? Would this behavior fall under one of the district policies that are on tonight's agenda? And if students wrote to the board to express their outrage at this display, would they be disregarded so quickly, the way our VP dismissed and our president completely ignored the repeated concerns and outrage communicated by the LSR7 community in response to such inexcusable behaviors from a so-called leader and district representative? And should there be a difference in the kind of behavior we expect from our students and district leaders? Should we hold district leaders to lower standards than our students? The way I see it, Mr. Haley's behavior is either a gross demonstration of his ignorance or a blatant and gross disregard for the duty he swore to uphold. Which is worse, I don't know, but neither sound like qualities that we should accept from any district leader. And sir, if you're not interested in serving all LSR7 students, you should do them all a favor and step down. Thank you.
Devoya Marshall.
Good evening. My name is Devoya Marshall, mother of four students in the district and President of Strengthening Education Together Political Action Committee. I'm going to do a little bit of reading for us tonight, starting from the LSR7 website on dignity and belonging. It states, "In LSR7, we believe all students deserve a full experience enriched by a deep sense of dignity and belonging. All LSR7 efforts, structures, resources, and people align around a clear district-wide vision of equitable learning and development and a shared understanding of why and how this drives everyone's work." Would you all agree that board members are a part of the student's school experience as they visit all our students directly in their classrooms? It goes on to say, "As part of our efforts to strengthen and build a culture of dignity and belonging, LSR7 has collaborated with external facilitators Floyd Cobb and John Crown Apple and used their anchor text, 'Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity.'" The book was approved and utilized by our district and has been added to the long list of books attempts to be banned by some community and board members who are, quote, "have big beefs with the book." So let's hear some content from this book referred to as "The Ugly Baby." "Dignity and belonging go together. They have a cause-and-effect relationship in that we build belonging by honoring dignity. We can foster belonging for our students, families, and colleagues, and even for ourselves." Then says, "How do we know for sure that we are teaching, leading, and generally interacting with dignity and that our intentions match our actions? Essentially, we must have a way of knowing if people, knowing if people feel that they belong in our classroom, schools, and communities. To that end, we offer a means to gauge, assess, and benchmark the effectiveness of our behaviors, practices, and policies. We call this the tool of, we call this tool the indicators of belonging. These indicators are four states of being that describe the quality of people's present experience. Feeling validated, appreciated, accepted, and treated fairly are all signs that dignity is being honored and that a person feels like they belong. To use these indicators effectively, we need to better understand people's experiences with us and within our environment." It then lists essential elements of dignity, some of which are recognition, validating people, acknowledgement, responding to concerns, and accountability. Apologize for causing harm. "It seems as if we should spend less time trying to ignore the truth of our American history as identified in this text that our current Board Vice President, quote, vehemently disagrees with their philosophy. We should continue to embrace the contents of this book that if consistently implemented, could have prevented the insensitive and offensive moment that brought many here today." Thank you.
Gary Hocker.
My name is Gary Hocker. I've lived in this community for over 50 years. I've been married for over 50 years. I've had two daughters graduate, go on to college. Each graduate with two degrees from college. And quite frankly, folks, I'm ashamed of myself this morning, this afternoon, this evening, whenever it is. I'm not ashamed of myself, I'm disappointed, I'm aggravated. I'm aggravated that what's going on in our, in our school system today is actually going on. It scares me to death that we have a First Amendment that allows us to say what we want to say, as long as it's not hurting someone else. And we come to a school board meeting and we are supposed to sit here and listen to people tear down other people, setting a great example for the one young man that's sitting in this room back here. We're making these kind of statements. And as a parent, I'm ashamed of everyone else in this room, everyone else in this room. I don't care what your color is. I'm ashamed of everyone talking like this. This is a school board. I've got a minute and a half, a buck and a half left in this. And I can't tell you how frustrated I am. I know Bill Haley. It's a blessing that Bill Haley's in this group. He's shown leadership, he's shown the guts, that he's not afraid to stand up and do what he knows is great. What he knows is right, and there's not a thing wrong with having him have a flag on his table and have shot glasses. Heavens, it was the people that he was running against that called him the redneck. He didn't call himself the redneck. What are you all talking about? I want to know, speak up. I'm sorry, you have something? I'm sorry, it's time for us to grow up. I really am. I think it's, if the school board's not ashamed of this activity, I am. As a parent, I am. As a grandparent, I am. And it bothers me that in America, when you can say what you want to say as long as you're not hurting someone else, you don't have to worry about being knocked down. Bill knows how to get up. Bill's the best thing that happened to this school board in the last year. And there's not going to be anybody here stand up and say it tonight, but I am. I don't have to worry about that. And for us to even have to have law officers here, we had a man kicked out of this room about a year, about two years ago because he was trying to read out of a book that they wouldn't allow. I'm done.
Ayesha O'Malley.
Hello. My name is Ayesha O'Malley, and I'm a parent of a child here in the district. I'm a former alumni from Lee Sommet High School, and I am also a gun violence survivor. Firearms, like the one that Board Member Haley peddles for profit, are the leading cause of death in children in the United States. If there's something that should be embarrassed or that we should be ashamed of, it should be that the number-one killer of children in the United States is firearms. More than motor vehicles, more than poisoning, more than cancer, more than suffocation combined, more than abortion included. Our children, because after all, aren't they all our children, they're part of the 120 deaths a day in America, every day, 26 times any other nation. Now, our children and gun violence has steadily increased dramatically since 2019, meaning our kids are impacted by violence. Our kids, our Lee Summit elementary kids, our Lee Summit middle school kids, our high school kids, they have experienced gun violence. Now, Mr. Haley's a shooter, as he told us, you know, last spring, and boy, did he remind us at the recent private event that we've been talking about this evening. Y'all know that he already, Mr. Haley mocked the Black Lives Progressive Movement with his racist display too. We know he's not like us, but making fun of a movement established to protect members of our community. He doesn't want to acknowledge us, but we're here. He said he was there to promote his business, but he had empty shell casings and holiday Each of those empty shell casings representing perhaps another brown or black life cut short by the hate that he sells for his honest profit. He justified that he was promoting his business of killing as a private citizen. Hypothetically, so if I owned an adult novelty shop and I was also elected to the school board, and I had an event that I could go to as a private citizen, would I be able to dress up with all the little holiday lights of the little dinglings and, you know, all the other goodies that would be sold in an adult novelty shop? No, I wouldn't, because it's not appropriate. It was stated right at the beginning of this meeting that there are certain things that are just inappropriate for our children, and this is one of them, Mr. Haley, and you need to understand that. We need, no member of the Lee Summit R seven school board, you represent our community, and you need to apologize for being inappropriate, and you need to apologize, and if you're not going to apologize, then you need to step down and you need to resign, and I'm asking that from the board tonight for Mr. Haley's resignation. We need you all to work together and use your brains, demand that, you know, that he resigns. Thank you.
Kristi Grimes?
On August 14th, I emailed the Board of Education as a parent of three LSR seven students, a community member, and most importantly, a constituent. In this email, I voiced my concerns about the distasteful manner in which board member Haley represented himself and by proxy the Board of Education and the school district at the recent LS Educational Foundation trivia night event on Friday, August 9th. In my message, I outlined numerous concerns regarding the display of a Redneck Lives Matter sign and the use of what appeared to be shotgun shell casings as table decor. I expressed in detail how the decision to use such decor at an event associated with the school district failed to meet community expectations, expectations that board members will publicly exhibit values aligned with the mission and vision statements of the LSR seven school district, as well as adherence with school board ethics and equity policies. My email concluded with a few simple requests, most notably, a formal, public apology from board member Haley in accordance with his duty of public trust. Over the last week, I received only one response to my email from Vice President Eslic, a lackluster, canned response which claimed that board member Haley was not acting in an official capacity. However, as I stated in my email, board member Haley's posts on both his personal and official board member Facebook pages were captioned, "Three school board members representing." Vice President Eslic's failure to address this contradiction leads me to only one conclusion. She didn't even bother to read my email before copy-pasting the same generic and dismissive response that was sent to others. Additionally, in her response, Vice President Eslic stated, "Board leadership did address community concerns with him around this decision and what it means to the community. Nothing in that statement indicates that there is any acknowledgement by President Foley, Vice President Eslic, or other leaders that board member Haley's actions were unacceptable to the board. While I understand that board leadership does not have the power to force actions from board members, each and every one of you have the power to individually and/or collectively denounce inappropriate actions and behaviors from your fellow board members. In this instance, silence speaks volumes." Further, Vice President Eslic suggested I speak directly with the board member Haley, but I reject that that is my responsibility to initiate any further contact. If board member Haley was truly willing to have an open and honest dialogue on this matter, there was no reason he couldn't have personally responded to me or anyone else that emailed the board with their concerns. Instead, he gave an exclusive interview to an unnamed person with Lee Summit Tribune in which the writer alleges that board member Haley sincerely apologized to anyone who offended. To be unmistakably clear, I'm sorry I offended you is not an apology. This response evades any personal accountability for offensive behavior and actions. In this interview, he also quoted, he would be willing to sit down and have a cup of coffee to discuss the continuing improvement of Lee Summit R seven. I'm going to finish one thing. I also reject this notion as it is not an acceptable forum to address matters of community concern. One-on-one conversations do not provide the public transparency this matter requires.
Next up, we have 5.01 Board Committee Reports. I'm going to start with Board Member Johnson.
I have one committee report. I attended the bond interview committee, excuse me, I attended a bond committee meeting. It's a part of the Finance Department where we looked at evaluating companies to issue the bonds that we use in our city and in our school district to fund projects and to look at putting things on the ballot for the next year. So we interviewed those companies and in the process of making the decisions that we'll be hearing more about. That is the end of my report.
Thank you. Board Member Myers?
No committees, however, that will change dramatically next month.
Thank you. Sure. Okay. I attended the board leadership meeting with you, and I also attended the Bond Underwriter Selection Committee meeting with board member Johnson. And just to add a little bit of detail to that for our fellow board members, this was a really difficult decision for the entire committee to choose between Piper and Raymond James. Two individuals who came from Stiefel, our previous bond underwriter, have moved over to Piper, so we had a strong relationship draw with Piper, and we were really focused on wanting to maintain that relationship because they've done a really good job for LSR seven in the past, and we have over a decade of experience with those two gentlemen. Raymond James was also very compelling in their argument to try and win the partnership with LSR seven. And based on their large network of firm relationships and their capitalization rates, how much money they have to be able to honor the bonds at the low interest rate that they're promising, we also wanted to align with Raymond James. So it made a very difficult decision, which is why we went the path of utilizing both providers and being able to leverage both of their strengths. So Piper will be the primary and Raymond James would be a co-underwriter if the board so approves. So that's just a little bit about some of that conversation. And then unfortunately, this month, I was out of town for the Finance Committee meeting, so that will be, board member Haley attended that one. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Board Member Gary?
Thank you. I just had a couple here. First, starting with Lee Summit Educational Foundation, so I attended one of their meetings, but I just wanted to highlight a lot of the good that comes from the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. We had an eventful week a couple of weeks ago where new teachers were awarded $100 gift cards to kind of get their rooms and supplies together before school started. And then, of course, we had convocation, so that was welcoming all the teachers in the district to kind of kick off the year. My other meeting that I attended was with Lee Summit Cares. A couple of things just to make note of that have events coming up. So Youth Wellness Day, September 28th, so I believe that has, it's kind of a forum thing, I believe. And then, as far as looking down the road further, we have the Character Breakfast that will be coming up Thursday, January 16th. And then, one event that will be coming up that I found very interesting is September 23rd. There is going to be an open and honest discussion regarding protecting children from human trafficking and the effects of pornography, and there will be a couple of representative legislatures that will be attending, Representative John Patterson and Jeff Myers. Human trafficking has become a, it's a big topic going on right now nationwide, and it's real, it affects our kids, and I can't wait to hear this, be, attend this event and hear what all the discussion entails. So that was it.
Thank you. Board Member Miller?
I had the opportunity to attend the Lee Summit Chamber New Teacher Breakfast, which was wonderful to welcome all of our new teachers that are new to the district, some that are coming back to the district, and so just wonderful to see. So kudos to all of the organizers of that event, because I think our new teachers felt very welcome to our district.
Thank you. Board Member Haley?
Yes, I zoomed in onto the Finance Committee meeting. Mr. Holder didn't have a lot to report. This is, I guess, the slow time of the year for him. There's still some resolution to be had with Jackson County and the taxation issue, but kind of that stuff's up in the air right now. So there wasn't a whole lot to report from the Finance Committee, but I do have a statement here that I'd like to read. "As has been pointed out, my family and I did attend the Lee Summit Educational Foundation trivia night the other day, and our table decorations were quite offensive to a number of members of our community, and for that, I'm genuinely sorry. There was never any intent to be provocative or to make a political statement. Not a single person mentioned this to me during the trivia night. If a single person would have been, come up to me and told me they were offended by our table decorations, I would have removed them immediately. There's been a lot of false accusations thrown out there that there's some kind of nefarious motives behind all this and that somehow I'm a racist. Anyone who accuses me of racism does not know my family. I've apologized in private to my colleagues on the board, and I give them a public apology right now. I'm genuinely sorry that my display offended anyone in this community. Now, let me say this, I will not apologize for who I am or the way I conduct myself, okay? I'm genuinely sorry for what I did, but I reach out to members of the community. I've tried to reach out to members of this community since I began running for the school board in January. Not a single person that's made all of these accusations against me has been willing to sit down and talk to me before this time. I have tried to reach out across all lines in this community because I believe that's the way forward for our school board and for our administration. We will never find the best way forward in secret social media chat rooms. If we're going to move this school district forward, we need social dialogue between all parties, all stakeholders. And I'm making a renewed call this evening that anyone that wants to make this a better school district, I'm making myself available to you. Reach out to me, we'll sit down, and we'll figure out the best way forward. Thank you."
For my committees this month, I just had the board leadership meeting, and so it was pretty uneventful for me. With that, we'll move on to item 6.01. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the treasurer's report and the payment of bills.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, we have the items for consent.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have item 8.01, approve insurance plans for calendar year 2025.
I'm the one that asked for this to be pulled from consent, as I'm a retiree that's still on the insurance, so I'll abstain.
Okay. Noted. Can I get a motion?
It's a really long one. I move that the board approves coverage and the related contracts for the 2025 plan year with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City for medical insurance with the district premium funding of $890 per month, per full-time employee, Delta Dental for dental with the district funding at $14.90 per month per employee, Delta Dental for vision and the standard for life, accidental death and dismemberment, long-term disability, and short-term medical leave claim administrative services.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those that abstain? All right, next up, we have item 8.02, Board Policy KI, Public Solicitation and Advertising in District Facilities.
Do you want me to talk to this one a little bit? I borrowed that.
Sure, but it looks like you already have a question as well.
Okay, do you, I don't know who asked the question, was it? Do you want me to just give a background a little bit, or did you want to ask your question first?
I didn't have a question, I was just going to make a motion.
Okay. Well, I'll just give a little background, just so we can just have a little, if anybody wants to have any dialogue on this. During the primary election a couple of weeks ago, there were some issues at some of our buildings where some staff were asking whether they were allowed to remove signs, and per our policy, technically, that is the case in our policy KI. It does allow for the district to be able to remove any political advertising whatsoever. It's actually not allowed at all. But as everybody up here is aware, and many people who have been politically active in the community and are voters, which is probably everybody in this room, we have always, at least in the last couple of years, had political signs at our facilities, and we've also been able to have electioneering occurring on our property for the buildings that we use as polling places. Being that we have been intentional in our calendar construction to make sure that our schools are not in session, and generally, with the exception of August, because we did have staff in the building, we typically don't have anybody in our buildings for the November election and the April election, because it has been our practice, I consulted with Board President Foley and wanted to see if the rest of the board would be willing to entertain a policy change so that the policy actually reflects our practice, because we have in practice been allowing our candidates to advertise. And in my opinion, as a board member, because we use our district taxpayer facilities as polling places, I think it should be part of our process that we also allow that political process to play out in those facilities. These are taxpayer-funded facilities, and I think it comes down to how you view your First Amendment rights to be able to advertise and be able to get information from your candidates. So I personally do not want to strip our community from access to candidates, to information, to signs, to the same-day information gleaning that people sometimes do if they haven't been watching a municipal election or a general election. So that is the genesis behind this, and there are two options that are proposed here. One, that I suggested some language, and then the version two edit with some critiques by legal. So I hope everybody had a chance to look at them, but that's kind of where this came from, so with that, I'll be quiet.
Board Member Miller?
I was kind of in the same vein, going to move to amend the policy to allow it, so I'm on the same page as you, yes.
Second.
We, I don't think we have a motion on the floor for the specific version. Can I get a motion?
I move to amend Board Policy KI to allow political signs on Election Day.
Can you mention the version name?
Version two? Version two, I think?
Yeah.
If everybody agrees with that one.
Version two. Version two. Do you want me to re-say?
Can I, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second. And before we do go ahead and vote, I do have a question. I just wanted to know, there was discussion potentially about this going through Board Policy Committee, and I've been out of town for a significant amount of time, so I just wanted to check and see if, if that made that through Board Policy Committee, or if that is something that we need to, to do, or if we're just gonna go ahead and modify the verbiage.
So just to give a little bit of information on why that was, that was a suggestion, just like a specific example was maybe the buildings have some concerns that we're not considering around maybe, like, there's nothing in here that mentions sign size. Now, nothing says banner, and hopefully, everybody could distinguish between what a banner, what's a banner and what's a sign. But how deep do you want to get into the detail of this? I think generally, I've never seen a banner at one of our polling places at a school. I don't know about anybody else. I think they've all been a standard election-size sign. So maybe that's not something we need to address until we need to address it, but that's kind of along the lines of what, the reason why it was suggested.
Okay, with that, does anybody have any additional questions before we vote? Saying none? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next up, we have item 9.01. Resident Requested Item: Standardized Process for Library Materials.
Under a new Missouri law, residents of LSR VII may ask that the Board include an item on the agenda of a regular Board meeting. The Board of Education has revised Policy BDDB II to accommodate this new law. The Board has received a request from a residence, resident, to place an item on the agenda for this evening's meeting. Under Policy BDDB II, the resident is allotted three minutes to speak about the agenda item, and those comments are subject to the same standards and restrictions that apply to persons who speak during the public comment portion of Board meetings. Under Policy BDDB II, the Board ordinarily will not discuss or act on a resident-initiated agenda item at the meeting where it is presented. It will be treated as an information-only item, but may be the subject of discussion or action at a later meeting of the Board. This is done so that the Board has time to reflect on the item and allow the district's administration and other members of the community time to submit their views on the topic. The resident who has asked to have an item placed on the agenda of tonight's meeting is Kristen Grubbs. Before they speak, I'd like to remind everyone that the same rules for speaking apply here as they do during our public comment session.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Grubbs, and I thank the Board for the opportunity to present on the information of the importance of a standardized process for materials entering the district. There are 248 policies in LSR VII and dozens of administrative procedures, forms, and regulations to support them. Policy EHB restricts the use of district devices for accessing or disseminating obscene, pornographic, or other harmful materials for minors. Why do we have this policy? What's the point in filtering content on district devices? I mean, students can access that stuff on their phones. Policy IGDBA restricts students from making and distributing unofficial publications that have obscene, pornographic, or any other harmful content for minors. Why was this policy put in place? Policy INC-1 prohibits speakers at district events from using obscene, vulgar, lewd, or indecent speech. Why do we have this policy? After all, students hear this language in the hallways all the time. Regulation JGR-1 on student discipline says that students displaying sexually explicit, vulgar, or violent material may be disciplined with detention or even as much as expulsion. However, the same regulation also states that the prohibition on this content, this type of content, does not apply to curricular material that has been approved by district staff for its educational value. Why does our district have a regulation imposing disciplinary actions on students for accessing such materials, yet libraries are, libraries allow materials with this content without restriction or repercussions? Why is it that a person speaking at a school district event is restricted from reading the very material allowed in our schools? Perhaps it's because there is indeed a generally agreed-upon notion that language and content like this is inappropriate for a school setting. Board Members, I challenge you to take a deeper look at each of these policies I've mentioned, as well as Policy IA and Regulation IIAC-R1 about the objectives for materials and how the district obtains them. Then I challenge you to read Policy IIAC-1 and consider all it says about the purpose for each material and how it's to contribute to education. Then, go back and reread the first sentence of this policy, which says, "As the governing body of the school district, the Board is legally responsible for the selection of instructional materials." Board Members, are each of you willing to stand legally responsible for every material made available in our schools right now? If there are materials that you believe do not fit the curricular needs of our students or possibly violate Missouri law for their sexually explicit content, then perhaps a standard practice for evaluating materials before they enter our district is indeed necessary. If you check your inboxes, you will find a file that I created with a bit more information on this proposed topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grubbs? Looks like we have some questions if you want to stay up here. Board Member Miller?
Thank you. I just have a couple clarifying questions for you, Kristen. Okay, so your recommendations, do you feel like they will increase academic outcomes for our students?
I believe that we need to put into place a system like we do for our curriculum, our instructional material in our classrooms, which is evaluated by committees. I'm not saying every book or material needs to be evaluated by a committee. But we have rubrics in place in different areas of our district to evaluate programs and curriculum before it enters the district. We don't have that in our libraries. We don't have, you know, when our librarians or whoever is bringing materials in, they don't sit down, I mean, they don't have like a formal document with criteria listed, a scoring process, to be able to assess the material and, and essentially score it and say, hey, this one on this topic or whatever is the best out there, we should have it in here. We just have a very subjective process, which leads to examples like you'll find in the information I emailed each of you, that probably, I should say, 100% should never have been made, have made it into the school libraries.
Okay. And have you met with any district staff other than Dr. Buck or, or any school board members about your presentation?
I have spoke one-on-one with several school board members over the last couple of, well, couple of years about this, and I've spoken with community members. My, in the file that I sent you to kind of link all of this out and what a process like this could look like, I do actually detail my first encounter with the district employee on this issue. And I was basically, I should just say dismissed. I, I inquired about a particular title, which I knew to be in the school library at Lee Summit North. And I, I inquired with the librarian at North, and I said, I'm pretty sure this one violates the new law that was put in place in August of '22. And he emailed me back and said, oh, I don't find that in our collection right now. I said, well, that's odd, because it was there at 2:30, 2:30 in the afternoon on Friday when I emailed you. And when he responded, it was noon on Monday, and I checked, and indeed, it was no longer in the library catalog. So between Friday and Monday, strangely, that book disappeared. That book, you'll find, you'll find pieces of in the file I sent you.
All right, thank you. What are the financial implications of your request, if any? Is that outlined?
I'm not sure. That's not up to me to do. This is something I'm putting forth, the idea for the Board to consider, and to, like any other program or, or curriculum or such, is to put a committee in place, work it out, hash it out. What would it look like? What would it cost? That's not on me.
And do you have, do you have any children in our district at any level?
I pay taxes in this district. I have indeed had children in this district for 10 years.
Do you have any children in our district at any level currently?
Does that matter? Does that lessen my opinion?
I'm just, I was, it's just a question.
Does that lessen the value of this?
Thank you, Mrs. Grubbs. And my next question is actually for Board Leadership. I know when we were discussing policy, that we wanted to have a summary of, of the meeting when anybody requested to speak. And so I was just wondering if we have, like, prior to our, prior to having someone come speak, we would be able to see what the summary that was given to the superintendent or the designee? We talked about doing that, if that would be made available. And I was just wondering if that could be made available, if that happened in this situation.
Are you talking about the sheet that's in there, that's in the board packet?
Not that sheet, but just, I mean, I read the sheet, I saw the sheet, but just the conversation or any summation of what happened, like, when they, when the person's met with Dr. Buck.
I think that would be a question for Dr. Buck. That was not something that was even provided to us, so we received the same information that you did.
Thank you.
All right, any other further questions? Thank you. Next up, we have 9.02. Aquatic Center Annual Program Evaluation.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to represent the Aquatic Center. My name is Quasi Brown, the Aquatics Director for the District. This evening, I plan on taking you all through a short journey of the Aquatic Center, in which I will share information that maps directly to our mission, allows you to see our vision, and then takes you, and then hopefully, you will have a good understanding of our purpose. There are a lot of people in this room that have never been to the Aquatic Center, so this presentation includes pictures along with a lot of written information to help you, to help tell the story. To start, I want to bring attention to Nicole Diamond, standing next to Dr. Buck in this picture, as she was our learner for life award winner back in March. On this page, you will notice that we have a mission, our vision, and our promise. The wall mural that you see in this picture was painted by a former Lee Summit West graduate, Savannah Myers. Their information, I am, I'm sorry, the information I'm presenting this evening will reflect our mission, which is guiding us through our entire approach of life-changing opportunities for our students and our community members. Just a little bit of background information on the Aquatic Center. The Aquatic Center opened in 2009 as a educational resource for our students. The other goal of the Aquatic Center was to generate revenue to offset operational costs for the facility. Here's a little facility data. We've taught over 10,000 swim lesson programs at the Aquatic Center since 2009. Since 2009 to 2012, we have, we had seven total programs. In 2020 to 2024, we have 18 total programs to date. The backdrop, the backdrop in the slide of this paint, of this slide is a painting created by another former Lee Summit West student that is in the entryway of the Aquatic Center. The information on this slide is an example of our programs and how everything is interconnected. As you will see, I am supervised by Kirk Hippel, our District Athletic and Activities Director. Then there's me, I'm a full-time staff member for the district, along with Nicole Diamond, who is our Aquatic Center Program Coordinator, and then the rest of everybody, the rest of the individuals are our part-time assistants. I have an, I have an advisory team, two advisory teams. I have one external and one internal advisory team. The external advisory team advises us, advises me on activities for students and our community. The internal advisory team advises on internal programs for our students. The slide we're looking at right now is our annual program participation data. This is data that you can review at a later date, but one item that I'd like to pull our attention to is our Learn to Swim program. Our Learn to Swim program starts children out in the program at ages three to 18. We do have an infant preschool aquatics program for our younger children ages six months to three years of age, and then we do have an adult Learn to Swim program. We are one of five aquatic centers in the Kansas City metro area that offers an adult Learn to Swim program. To our revenue and expenditures, since 2012, from 2011 to 2024, we have increased revenue at the Aquatic Center 119%. And although the revenue continues to climb, so do the expenses. Here's some water safety data. We like to inform our patrons and our community of water safety information, along with informing you with the water safety information, we also want to provide the service that will help us close that gap for the statistics that you are seeing below. Over 54% of adults do not know how to swim, and if you learn how to swim, you reduce the risk of drowning by 88%. So again, we offer infant swim pro, swim lessons, we offer youth swim lessons, and then we offer adult swim lessons. To the lower right-hand corner, you will notice, you will notice that we do offer an annual boat of safety training program. In the spring, we have partnered with the Highway Patrol to offer this program every May. And then we have our interscholastic swimming highlights and achievements. This program, the students in these pictures are representing their middle school, their high school, and our general community. We are a service branch training location for the White Men Air Force Base B-2 A-10 pilots for the water survival certification training, also for the National Guard C-130 aircrew. We also are a training facility for our Army Corps of Engineers when they test out their underwater drones. The information you see right here is our marketing information. We do multiple forms of marketing. We have online marketing, direct marketing, we market programs through our scoreboard initiative, direct emailers, and in our newsletter. This will wrap up the presentation. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next up, we have 9.03. Human Resources Department Annual Program Evaluation.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about the, the work we're doing in the Human Resources Department here in Lee Summit R7. And I'm just gonna jump right in and start with the team that we get to work with together to, to make the work happen for Lee Summit R7. These folks make all the functions within our department happen for our school district. Dr. DeVilbis, I believe, is in the room tonight as one of those valued team members. as one of those valued team members. Well, I do want to mention, we did have three of our team members retire this spring and summer. So we were excited that they're transitioning into their next chapter of retirement and grateful for their service. So we have a couple new members that have joined the team, have been fantastic as well. So as in the past, this is an overview of what the human resources work has looked like over the last year. First is a brief summary of the number of employees. And what this number shows is the number of comp summary or contract employees that we have in the district. Those are, so this would not include, like, our hourly employees, our gate workers, that sort of thing. So there's over 2,900 employees here, and then it's grouped up there by salary schedule for our four different salary schedules for employees. If I'm speaking in public, you'll often hear me mention that, you know, we have over 3,000 employees. Because when you include a non-faculty coach or an hourly worker, folks like that, that does bump that number up. I do often mention that we are proud as a school district that we are the largest employer in our community, which has a huge impact on our community. So here's the mission of our Human Resources Department and team. And I do want to pause and just say thanks. It's been a busy last few years, but the last couple of years especially. It's been a hiring season. Our leaders, our hiring managers, our principals, directors have done a fantastic job of using a site-based approach in hiring to identify strong candidates to make a difference for the young people in our schools. Also want to mention, we have a couple positions we're still actively hiring for. If you know anyone that'd like to be a paraprofessional, custodian, great benefits that were approved by the Board of Education tonight, as well as a wonderful competitive, market competitive salary as well. One important part of what we do is Team Lee Summit, where it's a collaborative group of folks that come together and will be working starting here in September. We do have two board members. We're excited to have on that team again this year, where we collaborate to identify priorities for the school district, specifically with quality of work-life issues, having a competitive but affordable benefits package, also being competitive in salary. We do take a lot of time in that group to look at data. And it's a representative group, as you can see, where we have five teachers, five support and professional staff members and mixture there, and then five administrators that work with a facilitator that helps our team come to a consensus, a collaborative group process to bring recommendations forward to the Board of Education through the superintendent. Do want to brief summary of the work we are proud of in Team Lee Summit last year to do and present to the board. Appreciate the unanimous support from the Board of Education on the Team Lee Summit recommendation last year, where we were able to fortunately give good raises for our people in the school district. We also, if you see there, had a range adjustment for bus aids to try to help with the, make that more competitive to fill positions there. And then we also suspended the Board of Education, excepted the recommendation we had of suspending board policy, part of our board policy, GCBDA and GDBDA, what was commonly referred to as emergency days, to suspend that policy. And we are collecting data for the board, as was discussed last winter, on how that suspension serves our students. Next is just some hiring data from the goal from our CSIP and also from what the Board of Education has asked for in the past on our 2,908 employees and what makes up our employee groups. Specifically regarding our CSIP goal and diversity, we show the last four years of hiring for classified staff, which would be primarily your support and professional staff members, and then your certified staff, which is your teachers and administrators. And as you can see, we've made progress each year on adding diversity to our program, to our schools, and to our workforce, though we've not arrived at our goal of having our staff reflect the students that are in our schools. With that, we always make sure that we want to recruit broadly, get lots of candidates in for a competitive process, and then we hire the best candidate for each position. Also want to mention just the cohort from last year. And of the hiring cohort, what the percentage of diversity was in each cohort for by teacher, support, professional administrator, and each of those salary schedules as well. Another data point we've shared in the past is just our breakdown by gender. Education is still typically a female-dominated field. This is our classified staff reflection, as well as our certified staff with teachers and administrators in that workforce. Some other things we share with the board is just some things about absent dad and other things that we manage in the HR office. Do want to mention one of the benefits that actually getting approved tonight. Our short-term medical leave program is a board-paid district benefit that our staff enjoys. And we used over 27,000 hours of short-term medical leave. Now, that's leave where our employees got to enjoy 100% of their pay for that time they were gone for their medical condition. We also had over $52,000 in professional development hours, where we're investing in the growth of our people, as well as some other board policy leaves that we provide with jury duty. And then we do have personal time and vacation time as well that we offer to staff. Do want to take a moment to talk about PDO buybacks. We do not have sick time. We have personal days or personal time off in our school district. So here's just a quick snapshot of the hours offered to our staff. And then our PDO buyback program is something that we're really proud of. It's unique in the education niche, where our employees can sell back their PDOs for step one, for the daily rate of their position at step one of the pay scale. So that's an option they have. It is automatically bought back once they accumulate in the low twenties of our, of days, or hour equivalencies to days. Then they also have the option to sell back additional time for an August check that we just sent out recently. The total bought back, you can see, was over 23,000 hours at a value of about $780,000 to our employees. Another nice added benefit that we provide. This is another snapshot of just PTO time, personal time used, both in hours used and hours available to our staff that they still have banked at the end of this last school year. Also, we'll take a moment to talk about continuing education for our teachers. We do allow teachers to move on our salary schedule based on graduate work. So our teachers come to us with a bachelor's degree and their certification in their teaching area. So this reflects a great investment that we, as a school district, make in the professional growth and learning of our teaching professionals. So they can, one, go to classes and learn curriculum instruction, get a master's perhaps in their content area to be able to teach dual credit classes. And then as they move, we recognize that investment they made in their learning as a learning institution to then compensate them on our salary schedule. So you can see that the majority of our teaching staff has a master's plus 45 graduate hours beyond their master's degree, or a specialist plus 15 hours beyond their specialist degree to reach that fifth, second column there that is tallest. Our retention, again, last year was strong. We saw about 90% of our certified staff we retained, and about 80% of our classified staff. You see a kind of quick snapshot of the last three years there at the bottom of the combined staff. So we're still real proud of the fact that our retention is strong and of the strongest in the metro area when it comes to schools. We do have folks leave each year, some by resignation, some by retirement, some through promotion to other opportunities. And there's a quick snapshot of the separations that we had on the certified side, 137 individuals, and then on the classified side, about 276 staff members. So we do take a minute to, and this is a point of celebration. So for substitute services, we use KELA Education Services. And this is our sub-fill rates for all positions in the district. And we were right about 94%. Now, when I go to HR meetings in the metro area, I'm real careful not to say this too loud because folks get a little, not everyone's in the same spot. I'm going to switch to the next slide real quick, which shows our teacher fill rates at just over 97%. And then you can see the fill rates broken down by month, and then additional data by positions, absences, needed sub, filled, unfilled, and did not need a sub. So this has been the best year we've had in being able to fill subpositions and being able to cover it, which we all remember, it wasn't too long ago in COVID, when we had, we had teachers, staff, people in this building going and covering rooms and subbing because we just couldn't get folks in the classrooms. So to wrap up, just want to refocus on our goal with our action plan with the CSIP that we just sunsetted with Dr. Barker's work to recruit, hire, retain, and promote diverse staff. We're proud of the progress we've made in that CSIP goal, but we are still going to continue striving to achieve better. And part of that is through everyone's help. Everyone in this community is a recruiter. We all need to work together to promote what a great community we get to enjoy, the positive things that are happening in our community for our students, the focus our community has on kids, and know that it's important to talk about and focus on our brand here in Lee Summit, and that we have a great thing going for the young people here. So feel free to direct people, whether it's for custodian, pair, or any other job, to click on our website and look at the opportunities we have.
Thank you. Board Member Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Carlson. And thank you for what you and your team do to make sure we have great staff here in LSR 7. I just had a couple of questions for you. I was wondering if we could have, we could see information similar to Slide 7, but separated, or that includes staff that is separated from the district. Does that make sense? So Slide 7 that you have in your presentation, if we can have the data just like that for staff that's separated from the district?
Quick answers, yes, I want to make sure, so.
It's, yep. It's the one right before that, I think.
Right before this one?
It's the 2023-24 staff data with the diversity classifications.
Yes, that's it.
Got it. This one here?
Yep.
So you want, yes is the answer. We can get that. So, but I want to make sure I get it right. So you want data for the separations for the 23-24 school year by diversity, which has been defined by the Board of Education as ethnicity.
Yeah, so if we could have that for even the last three to four years, I would love to see that. And I also am curious, are there any trends that you're noticing that are negatively impacting hiring processes that the board should be aware of?
So first, I'm going to answer the first part of your question. I think one thing, since people leave, and there's lots of reasons people leave, but most people stay. So that's why we do track the data in this method, because it shows in the aggregate that if some people that are diverse do leave, we're hiring back more, we're hiring them back and then some. So that's one part. But yes, we'll get that data for you. And I think we're in a better spot today than we have been because just, and I'll just be candid, but the great work that the Public Relations Team has done and the Lee Summit brand and the positivity that is happening in our community really makes it, makes people, when they Google search Lee Summit, see positive things happening. So I think that's a big part of, you know, the last few years have been good, last couple of years have been real good about our brand being strong and people wanting to be here.
And do you think there's any, anything that's negatively impacting the hiring practices? We have a lot of positive, but is there anything that you can see that's negative that, like, the board should be aware of?
Yeah, I think the biggest challenges are the hard-to-fill areas like industrial technology. Special education can be challenging. Sometimes even some of the math and science positions can be challenging. I think one of the big challenges we have right now that Dr. Herzog and I collaborate and talk about each week, almost it seems, and with high school principals, is ROTC. There's such a narrow path to recruit ROTC teachers. It's such a great program, but we're just not seeing the candidates of Air Force retirees like we have in the past. So if anyone has Air Force retirees, commissioned or non-commissioned officers, they know that would be interested in making an impact on kids, the ROTC program in our high schools is a fantastic place to do it. So, but I will say, in the last two years, though, we have seen candidate pools grow. We're getting more applications. So it is better than it was a few years ago.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Vice President Eslic?
You just made me think of a question with regard to the ROTC position. So I was just curious where we typically try to find people? If there's any network, like, community networks? Like, I think of the, like, the VFW as one place. I don't know if there's, what kind of networking we do in that respect, or if we just put out the job opening and then whoever comes, comes?
Yeah, good question. And to start, I've not, I've not done much recruiting at the VFW yet. I hadn't thought about that. I might look into that. But we do put it on job boards through the Air Force. We do work through our network, especially with White Men nearby. We've also reached out to Offutt Air Force Base in the past, up at Omaha, to try to recruit there. What we're finding is the job market at a macro level affects things like this. And the reality is, we are finding even, we'll hire an Air Force person to join our program for ROTC, and they're quickly getting recruited away by engineering firms or different folks like that. So we're just, we're competing with, when unemployment is low, it is more challenging for us to compete. You know, when you think about it, school districts are a great job and a great career because it offers stability. In a stable community, education is a stable job. When unemployment's low, there's a lot more competition. And sometimes, just frankly, people can throw more money at someone to recruit them away from education.
That makes sense, thank you. I hope you find somebody because I know that program has been really valuable to, especially some of our student reps. I hear great things from them, so hopefully. Thanks.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Next up, we have 10.01 2022, no, 2023-2024 Nutrition Services Program Evaluation Written Report. Do we have any questions? Nope. Oh, Board Member Miller?
Well, first, I just want to say thank you for the hard work of our nutrition service staff because they do an incredible job of supporting our students. And I don't know if everybody knows this, but they're one of the only people in the whole entire school that sees all the students every day. So it's pretty cool. So just grateful for them. I am curious, I recently saw the news, we were on the news, and that our nutrition services team